Hold to order, roll call please.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. Uh, first item of discussion this morning is relating with to the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center memorandum of understanding. We'll call on our city administrator Andrew Bremseth. And we also have Neil Powers here from the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center in the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Morning, Andrew.
Yeah, good morning, your honor, members. A beautiful day today. Got a good agenda in front of us here, but uh, starting with the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Um, it's been existence since nineteen ninety-six and that was a really good partnership between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, State of Minnesota, City of Fergus Falls, School District, Lakes Country Service Cooperative, really a lot of moving parts there. Um, but today we're talking about the MOU, the memorandum of understanding pertaining to the relationship between the city and Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Um, that MOU has been in place since the beginning of the uh, relationship and the partnership because the city owns the buildings out there. Or most of the buildings out there, I should say, including the main building, the dormitory building and the land in which those buildings sit on. So with that MOU, um, we've done it, we've done kind of a deep dive back in two thousand nineteen and we did a five-year agreement. So now we're at the five-year mark and time to renew that. Um, I just want to highlight kind of there's two, two minor changes that come along with the action that we're going to take this year. One is just amending the dates to go up five years. So the new MOU would run from July first of twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. And then the second one is um, changing small language. So currently it states that uh, the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service pays the city eight thousand five hundred dollars annually. And what that's for is to cover the cost of insurance related to the buildings.
And a few other little costs, but the bulk of it is the insurance.
Like the county solid waste fee and some of those other things that go along with being owners of that property. And uh, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is proposing and I think this is a win for the city as well. Um, to replace that eighty-five-hundred-dollar amount with language that states that they'll cover the actual annual costs, which you know, as we've seen insurance premiums go up over the last few years. Um, we don't have to wonder if that number's going to be adequate to cover our costs. They're going to write the language, so they just pay what our actual cost is on an annual basis, so.
And Andrew, on a side note, um, the last two years, our costs have been over eighty-five-hundred and U.S. Fish and Wildlife has, you know, sent us a second payment to reimburse that last year and this year they just, we gave them the full amount and they, they covered that. So they are covering all the costs, so.
The uh, city's obligations under the agreement are unchanged, so nothing different from our end. And uh, as the mayor mentioned, Neil Powers, who is the project leader of the Fergus Falls Wetland Management District is here with us today. Neil's been great to work with the city and and the Prairie Wetlands have a good working relationship. And if anybody has any questions or if Neil wants to say anything more, he's available and uh, I know there was questions a few months ago about some of the staffing out there. And I think Neil's prepared to speak to any questions the council has this morning.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, I know there was some questions on the staffing several months ago and I have had uh, members of the community reach out to me and just, they wanted to just reiterate the fact that we really appreciate the partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, especially the local leadership. Uh, I think it's in everyone's interest and everyone's goal is to, you know, have his fully staffed out there and provide the uh, the public and the kids, the school district, the opportunities that they do. So we really appreciate the partnership over the years. I just want to reiterate that fact as we go through this challenge with, you know, those challenges at the local, state, federal levels, staffing and funding and all that. We want to just make sure that we, we uh, express our support and our appreciation for the partnership and the leadership that you provided.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Good morning, council members. Uh, it is a beautiful day out there, absolutely. Um, I, I would also like to just reflect that as well, your honor. Um, the working relationship that we have with the city has been outstanding and so we're rolling up on close to thirty years now. Um, we're very excited about that. Uh, it has been uh, really an incredible partnership, I think, for the community, for the school district, uh, and certainly for the Fish and Wildlife Service. It's something that we hold in extremely high regard uh, from the service's perspective. So uh, we're looking forward to continuing that. Uh, we've been hit by uh, on, on the good side, we had a number of employees for a very long tenure there. Uh, but all uh, good runs have to come to an end and so we've had a number of retirements. Uh, three very uh, key employees over the last eighteen months. And so we've been uh, working within our budget capacity to be able to uh, fill those positions. We're in the process right now of advertising for two of those, uh, the center director, along with uh, our lead environmental education individual. Uh, that interfaces directly with the school district and other schools within the committee on a daily basis. And so uh, our hope and goal right now is to have both of those individuals onboard and ready to roll by the time school starts this fall. And so as of right now, we're very much uh, on that trajectory. I believe that we can meet that or, or shortly thereafter. Um, and so uh, our desires to continue uh, our relationship and that partnership and to continue to uphold our end and fulfill those staffing obligations.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions, Scott?
Beyond what the schools activity is there, uh, just for the general public and their access and use and how the staffing relates to that. Things like the gift shop and access to things like the trails, the use of the space for other events. I've been out there for like, there was a fundraising meal that used the space, it was a beautiful space, great for that. How is any of that impacted uh, by the lack of staffing as they go into the summer now?
Yeah, great question, thank you so much for that. Um, I'll, I'll try to tease that apart and please uh, please jump in if I've missed a couple of parts there. So uh, since the pandemic, we've only been open one day a week. Um, it, it connected with the pandemic, but also correlated very closely with some of our staffing downturn. Um, so we needed to make some course corrections there. Essentially what we wanted to do was to try to prioritize uh, what our staffing resources were available to do and, and what our highest priorities were. Um, we see that as the relationship that we have with the school district here in Fergus Falls through the Prairie Science Class. Um, so you may have had children go through that class, but we have over two hundred fourth and fifth graders um, that essentially go to school at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center and use that as their outdoor classroom. Um, the uh, the short-term impact to some of our staffing has impacted some of those things, absolutely. So our ability to be open more than one day a week, um, our ability to also reflect that in having the bookstore with the Friends of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Uh, open has also impacted that. They're open when the center is open. Um, and we've also had some impacts to some of our other communities outside of the Fergus Falls area. Um, we typically have been able to serve up to thirty other communities uh, from Alexandria, Underwood, Battle Lake. Uh, o- over to Wapperton, uh, Breckenridge, as far to the north as Moorhead uh, on a regular recurring basis. We've simply had to reprioritize what our capacity has been, uh, and we've not been able to serve them. However, uh, they have and are still able to come out to the center every day. Um, if they so choose, um, they just need to do that in a self-guided capacity as opposed to having uh, one of our staff members provide them with a, a guided educational curriculum for that day. So, and I do also want to share as well that the center is open still every day to the public. Uh, if you want to come out, use the trails, uh, have an opportunity to uh, uh, refresh yourself and rejuvenate on a beautiful day like today, uh, the facility is available to the public.
Thanks, Neil. Any other questions for Neil? We would look for a recommendation, a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. Thanks, uh, Anthony and Scott. Jim, got a third there too. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post that sign, motion carries. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, have a great day.
All right. Uh, next we'll call on Clara, uh, Andrew Bremseth for the discussion on the street closures.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. I'm filling in for Clara today and uh, I didn't do a good job of preparing, so bear with me. But uh, before us is further discussion on the street closure policy. I know exactly what Jim just said, I didn't even hear it. I know you too well and I won't repeat it. Anyway, um, Clara had left a couple of clarifying questions for the council to help, maybe help guide the discussion today. And uh, I'll just maybe follow those and, and if council members have any other ideas, we'll try to capture those, excuse me. And have the policy amended for action on Monday night at the council meeting. Um, the first kind of topic I think to discuss, Councilmember Kwame brought this up at the council meeting last week, is related to needing uh, signatures from seventy-five percent of the impacted properties. So Clara's question is, is this, does the council want businesses to have a say in whether a street that serves them can be closed? And if so, is requiring signatures from seventy-five percent of the properties reasonable? Or should that percentage be adjusted to reach a different level or a different balance between community support and the feasibility of obtaining approval? So I guess really the question is, um, if you feel there's some sort of, should be some sort of requirement that businesses that will be impacted by the closures should have to buy in? What is the appropriate number? Is that fifty percent, is it twenty percent? Or do we scratch that altogether? Maybe I'll just pause there and look for some sort of feedback from the council on that.
Well, I'll, I'll just kick it off and just for discussion, um, I think if we have community events, I think we should, like if we have a parade, for example, I don't think we need to get seventy-five percent of the houses and streets on a, a, it's something that's clearly a community event. I think we can close streets down for if the public, public uh, public safety is on, is on board. It, you know, downtown though, if we have like a, a one-off event that they want to have us, I think the businesses should have say in that. That's my, that's my thoughts, I mean, I just, I don't think that the residents, like, I think it's the businesses and the, or the property owner. I don't think if there's four apartments in a building downtown, I don't think you have to get, you know, all of the tenants downtown. But I do think that, you know, if there's these one-off events that aren't community-wide, but there's, you know, we have requests for people to close off a block of downtown. And I think it's important that if I was a business owner down there, I'd want, you know, to be on board with that or have some, some saying that, but that's uh, that's my, that's my thought, Scott.
But the other, on the other hand, most of the businesses it's going to affect have a secondary, you know, anything on Main Street, you either got, you get in from the backside or the, you know, or the front side. So I'm just not, I don't think it's going to be a huge deal if we don't have one.
Yeah.
But that's, that's kind of my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a huge deal, I just think that if you have a, if you're going to close off a block of downtown, I would think that you'd want the businesses to just at least support and buy in and be a part of it.
Right.
I think we should just scratch it completely because staff is real good about letting everybody know what's going to happen. And, and I don't think we need to have anybody say yes or no or what have you. They can say yes or no when staff stops by to tell them that they're going to close it off. But uh, to go around each time and try and, I, I don't, I, I think it's a waste of time.
Yeah.
That brings me to a question. So in here, ten days, they have to have their application in. What is the timeframe that business owners are going to be notified so they can prepare in advance? If we don't have that?
Well, your honor, um, just, I, I think everybody understands, but just to be clear, it's not the city that would be going around getting signatures. It would be the person requesting the event. They would have to do that work prior to ten days. So if we have the requirement, the people on the block are going to be notified at least ten days before because they'll have to be asked and consent or whatever. Um, when we get a special event permit, um, application to close down the street, if we, if we get rid of this requirement and it's um, either approved by the city staff or the city council. We can create some sort of mechanism that um, when we have that application, we notify the, the impacted businesses. Um, and that would be at least ten days in advance. So we'd do that as soon as we had the application that would be considered um, by the council or by staff.
And I know, I, I was just going to say real quick to you, and I don't, I, I don't think this is the biggest deal, not to make an argument, but I do think if you have one business downtown that wants to close off the block, you're just setting staff in a bad position to make the determination whether they can close it off or not. If you don't have the buy-in from the, from the businesses, you know, I think if a business would go around and get support of whatever the, you know, council felt, it just makes staff's job a whole lot easier to then say, all right, this is supported by the block and we can um, go for it. But again, I, I, whatever the council thinks, go ahead.
I think, I think the first question is like, why? Why are we doing this now? You know, I mean, what, what stimulated this to be written?
Yeah, we've gotten, sorry, go ahead.
Well, because it's like we, we create rules and it's like, we should have a basis of why we're, why are we creating a rule? You know, is there a problem?
Yeah, I think, your honor, Councilmember Hicks, we've gotten a, a major influx of these requests over the last, I would say, two to three years. And uh, what we're seeing, and, and I won't single anybody out, but there's a new business within the last even six months. Within a month of being operational, the request was made, can I shut down the street and have an event, right? Um, and as we see more and more of that, there may, there may be standalone businesses that are making these requests. And the fear that, that we have as staff, as we have no criteria to approve or, or deny, right? So we've approved all of them. Um, at what point does another business say, come on now, you're restricting business from my business because of this one person? And, and we don't have any sort of requirements for frequency, you know, you can only do it once a year or you can do it six times a year. And so not having any sort of policy to fall back on, if any request comes in today, I don't see a basis in which we would deny it, right? So um, just trying to protect the city and protect businesses that may be impacted. As we've been talking this morning, one of the things that popped into my head was maybe we can, you know, maybe it's as simple as notifying the businesses as a request comes in and they come before the council. Um, each, each request comes before the council and if a business wants to object, they would have the ability to attend the council meeting and do that.
I, I mean, I have a follow-up, I, I'm not necessarily against it, but I, I, my thought was that I think that like, city-sponsored events should be exempt. So you have like Summer Fest kind of over the river, um, kind of shop move and groove, those ones, I think, we should maybe make a clause that just exempts them so that.
Yeah, like citywide, we have that policy.
If, if there's a citywide.
Community celebration and under the, under the first section of fees on page one, the third bullet point kind of talks about those community celebrations being exempt from special event rental fees. I think you could go as far as to say be exempt from this policy. So I agree with you, yeah.
And, and then my thought was like, you know, a notification like you just mentioned that, you know, you, you have to kind of put a notification in all of, but limited to the business as opposed to kind of like the tenant.
Yeah.
Because as you say, if, you know, it's like it's one building, say, you know, if you look like Greater Fergus Falls offices, that's basically, there's like four, three businesses there, you know? And then there's probably four or five apartments above. So obviously the one impacted, if you were going to do, would be just Greater Fergus Falls. So I think a notification, you know, would be good.
By the city or by the person?
By the person.
Okay.
You know, there was, as an example, there was one that came in yesterday, it just kind of came in casually like, hey, you know, I just, I think for staff's sake, if we have a policy, it's going to allow them to just approve these or not approve these. And I think that, I feel should be on the applicant, right? To go out and get support of the block and if they have the support of their neighbors and neighboring businesses and they're all in, I don't know why we would stop it. But at the same time, I don't think we need to be in the position to be putting, you know, closing streets down and affecting businesses. Are you looking for, are you, staff looking for some, some feedback to bring back uh, recommendation to the council?
We'll amend the policy and bring it back on Monday. So I, what I'm hearing, I don't know if I'm hearing a consensus, but what I'm hearing is that we get away from the percentage requirements. We have some sort of requirement that if somebody applies there to notify the impacted people on the block and they have the ability to um, come and object, I suppose, if, if they want to, which kind of leads me to the next question is um, i- if that Clara prepared, what are your thoughts on the importance of council review for all these closures? Do you believe that the council reviewing each request contributes to a fair and transparent process? And I think we're, in my mind, we're kind of leading ourselves there as opposed to just staff saying yes or no because it doesn't really give the ability for a business owner to object if we're just going to approve them administratively. Because then we're in a, a real predicament where it's one person wants it, one person doesn't want it, how do we handle that? Thoughts on, on whether or not these should come before the council?
Well, I'm probably in the minority, but I think we just need an administrative process that's clear, that people just apply and the staff can just, if it meets the requirements and the businesses sign on, then, you know, to bring people before the council every time, I think, um, I don't know, that's my thought, but I think I'm in the minority and that's fine with me.
And I think maybe we just need to have like a draft template of notification that sort of said that like, you know, when, and then if you wish to appeal, um, then you need to notify the city hall by such, such a date. You know, give them, you know, if we're saying this is ten days, you know, that as you say, the notice has to go out prior to the ten days when they put their application and say, you know, so that the letter kind of actually says, so that then from a city staff point of view, if you haven't, if you haven't heard any from anybody on that block or, or you have, then obviously, then maybe it goes to council. Because obviously, you know, if one person objects, you know, but nobody else does, then are you going to stop it for one person?
Fair question.
I mean, that's, you know, I agree with you, yeah.
I don't, I don't think we need to see each and every application. If, if, if they don't agree with staff says, then they can come to the council.
Maybe that's.
Otherwise, I, I, I don't think we need to see every one of them.
I think it's a good compromise. If there's an objection, we'll just approve them administratively if it looks like it's going to be, you know, one business versus another business, you guys can discuss the merits, figure out the impact of that. The other thing is, and I, I know Chief Bergens in the back, you know, closing streets has an impact on, on response and public safety and all those things. And that's part of the reason why we have at least the ten-day notices, so we can adequately notify the fire department, the police department, ambulance service, any emergency service. Um, because it may impact their, their routes for response and some of those things. And more frequently that streets are closed, the more disruptive it is to those services as well, so. What we don't want to do is create a policy, which makes it real easy to close down streets and we encourage it even more and more and more. Now, we do encourage community events and, and gatherings and block parties and all those things, so it's finding that balance. And I think we're, we're getting closer to doing that.
Sure. Uh, yeah, Scott?
Again, I, I think that trying to do this notification thing is going to become kind of a boondoggle for people. Because if I come in and I want to do this and I'm asking for the permit and all of that, um, and then I'm told you need to get the rest of your block to, you know, go in with you on this. Who's going to tell me who to even go and see and how to find them and what process to use to notify them? Do you notify them in the paper or on the radio to walk in their door? And how do you know if you've even gotten to them? We get a lot of criticism about people not hearing what we're doing. And we've got Facebook pages and we've got announcements on the radio and stuff and people say, oh, I didn't hear about it, it should have been in my utility bill, whatever, whatever, whatever. How would even this process work? I just think it's going to be very cumbersome. And we already have the specific events that the city is, you know, community-wide and, and maybe that's enough. And if we have these other things and they're a big enough deal to warrant closing the street, then it probably needs to come to the council and we talk about it. I appreciate the need for a policy and I think that does make things a lot easier for people. And if there was a way to get there, great. But the details of this still seem really foggy to me and I don't know that you're going to have it together by Monday, but if you can, bring it.
No promises, you know, the other thing, I'm just getting ideas as you guys are talking, so I appreciate your thoughts. You know, the other thing you could do is you could add a fee in here and city staff, our communications director could have a form letter. And you know, if you're closing Mill to Cork Street on Lincoln Avenue, we send mailers to everybody in that area and it's a form letter and, you know, the fee, the permit fee covers our costs of time and postage. But um, I'm creating work now, which is never.
And fees.
We can do it by email too.
Right, if you have everybody's email address, yeah.
I mean, I couldn't speak obviously for Paul, I mean, obviously I know Danieline and Burdock have done some events where they've kind of asked to close the street. I mean, you, typically Paul has gone to all the neighbors. I mean, you know, he, he walks the str- the block and, you know, talks to like Victor Lund Dean's or the Center for the Arts and usually, I mean, they, usually Michael's collaborative in that as well. Um, and I know he's, he's, you know, he's usually done something with Otter Cove and Malk, you know, um, so, and I know they've, they've usually done that typically around like their late till eight. And then it's usually been linked to kind of some sort of charitable, like I know the last one they did was to raise money for someplace safe. So I mean, I think, you know, we are trying to encourage people to come downtown and, you know, you know, we create policies and we create rules. And it's like, you know, how many rules do we need and then are we going to enforce them? And I still come back to like, you know, then what other streets do get kind of closed and how are we going to handle those? I think if it's not broken, I think, you know, we're trying to fix something that at, at this point in time, from our point of view, isn't, isn't broken.
Yeah, I think that's fair, I just, I think it's, we're on a collision course to that and we can wait until that happens. But I, I will say that, and Guy probably deals more with this than I do, but the number of requests has gone up pretty rapidly since close.
Yep.
And it's like, we get to spring and it's like, we get half dozen at a time kind of thing and.
And maybe we restrict it to so many a year, you know, on a per block basis.
But if I would just, from my experience, just to use your example, I think it's a perfect example, like Dana Land Burlock, they come to the city, they work perfectly, you know, it's just a natural process because they are collaborative with their neighbors. And we just put that, but the other ones that don't do that, right? They just come in as a single thing, they want to close it down and they, if there's a way to, without, you know, overburdening people, just to have that process just simply laid out, I think it's a good, it's a good for the staff. Because then you don't put, staff's not in a position to pit people against one another. Do you have some direction to?
I'll have Clara watch the discussion and try to answer what the policy should be. No, we'll work on this and.
All right.
To your point, Councilmember Kwame, it may not be Monday because it might be a complete revamp at this point, but we'll uh, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll find something that works for everybody.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next we have some guests from West Central Initiative. We have Commissioner Kurt Mortensen, Rebecca Lynn Peterson and Camille Pearson Walls. Uh, good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I like, I love it that you have an adjustable microphone for short people like myself. Well, thanks for having us and yes, I brought a whole entourage here this morning. And I'm going to ask Camille to say a few words and also our EDD board member Kurt Mortensen. Um, typically in the past, we would show up at this meeting and ask you for your continued support. Today, I'm basically just here to thank you for your ongoing partnership and support with West Central Initiative. And to give you some updates, we decided it's probably better for you if we send our proposal to Bill and he can present it to the council for discussion. Typically, we, we see uh, your support coming in at about eight or nine thousand dollars a year. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the return on that investment. And I'll leave this, Bill, I think I'll leave this with you, the list of grants and loans that we've made in the region. But since January of twenty twenty-three, one million two hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars in grants and loans just to Fergus Falls. And a lot of those funds come through the funds that we hold, for instance, we hold a fund for the Library Foundation, for the community, for the YMCA. And then we have a, many endowed funds, like you've probably seen the name Inga Johnson or Floyd Miller. Those are funds that we hold that we redistribute every year and they come, many of them to this community because that's what Inga wanted and that's what Floyd wanted. So um, I'll leave this with you and up that amount, seven hundred and thirty thousand were uh, dollars made in loans to help invest in the economic development of the region and other projects. So we do a lot of partnership loans with banks, we come in as the gap financer. So in your packet, which Camille just handed out, there's information about our loan program. So if you know businesses that are looking for gap financing, Greg Wagner at our office is the one to talk to. We also have our Rural Democracy Program and I'm sure you've heard about that. And uh, I like to remind people a couple of things, this is a nonpartisan program. And when we started doing the research, we found out that in our region, in our nine-county region that West Central Initiative serves, one in nine or eleven, depending on the population of that county, needs to run for public office. Whether it be city council, school board, uh, county commissioner, uh, all kinds of volunteer activities. So we have training programs to help people prepare to run for office and we're not trying to put any of you out of a job. We just want to offer that opportunity for people who have thought about running, but never really had the courage. Uh, there's a fact sheet about Otter Tail County. We have two Otter Tail County board members on our fifteen-member board, Elizabeth Paleya and David Sharnak. Our annual report, there's some great stories in here about the work that we do. And then a little tutorial on who we are as a regional development organization, as well as a community foundation. So in addition to doing all the grants and loans as a community foundation, we also serve as the regional development organization so we can bring federal dollars into our region. And so I've asked Kurt to just say a couple of words about being on the EDD board. Do you mind, Kurt?
No, no, that's fine. Good morning, mayor, members of the council. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. As Rebecca stated, I'm on the West Central Initiative Economic Development Advisory Board, a bit of a mouthful there. But yeah, in large part, it allows for communities in West Central Minnesota to qualify for federal assistance for infrastructure projects. That can look differently for different communities. They can work, West Central Initiative can work with communities in identifying resources that may be available for specific projects within that community. They can provide technical assistance for grant writing. They can offer gap, gap financing for small businesses to supplement or complement bank financing. So there, there's many avenues where support can be offered. That's probably more than I intended to say here, but again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mortensen.
See, it's better to have one person, more than one person at the microphone, right?
That's right.
Many voices. And then this year, we started our Start a Ripple campaign. And as I said, you know, the return on your investment starts that ripple of over a million dollars back into the community of Fergus Falls. So I've asked Camille, my colleague, as of this year, who's helping with the Start a Ripple campaign, just to say a few words.
Good morning and thank you for having me. As Rebecca mentioned, our Start a Ripple campaign is to create awareness to who West Central Initiative is and those important partnerships that we've been developing for over forty years throughout the region. A lot of people outside of Fergus Falls might only know us for one or two things. And so we're getting out to talk about the full breadth of our programs and how we are here to help the region as a whole. And so with that, our goal is to raise a million dollars to expand on programs. And in the brochure that you have here, there's four distinct areas where we're really looking to support more expanded services. And that would be early childhood, for which we have been known for as probably our longest standing program. Climate is relatively new and we're really excited. We hired a climate officer to help us carry out a lot of these good things that our partnerships throughout the region have found to be important. Matching grant programs are very important to us. And then also our Rural Democracy, encouraging people to consider raising their hand and participating in leading their specific communities. So if there's any questions, please let us know, but we're happy to be here today. So thank you.
Thanks, Camille.
Thanks. I, I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We, you know, ever since I started working out West Central Initiative, we've added a lot of programs. And everywhere I go, people ask me, well, what do you do? And I, well, I work at West Central Initiative. I've heard of that, but what do they do? We do a lot and I think it's hard to describe all the work in five or 10 minutes. But visit our website. We have an event coming up June 12th in Morris called Seventeen Rooms. We're embracing the seventeen strategic development goals of the United Nations. And so that's happening in June. Lots going on over the summer. Any questions for any of us? Comments?
Thanks, Rebecca. Anyone have any questions for Rebecca or Commissioner Mortensen or Camille? I think, as you mentioned, Rebecca, there's a ton of work that West Central does in the region, in the community that often goes a little bit under the radar and people don't fully understand. I mean, we have it in our backyard. We appreciate West Central Initiative. But to fully understand all the work that West Central Initiative does is truly amazing. So thanks for the good work and the partnerships.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have an update from Brandon Curry and Sandy Cunningham about the Fergus Falls Liquor Store and Big Wood Event Center. Morning, Brandon.
Morning. Good morning, Your Honor, Council. Just have a few things here. Actually, I have quite a few bold points, but I speak fast, so hopefully I'll fudge that through pretty quick. My name is Brandon. I'm the liquor store manager, also overseeing the Big Wood Event Center for the past 12 months. Like I said, I have plenty of liquor store topics to talk about by itself, but I do want to touch on the Big Wood previous or just briefly. First and foremost, I want to give a big shout out to our event center coordinator, Brooke. She's doing an awesome job, working really hard and really taking a lot of pride in the facility. Any of you that have been there in the last year know that she really, really enjoys her job and likes being there. And I'm excited about the new list of, of corporate business that have been coming into the place. We've just renewed driver's training services, driver vehicle services for two more years. It's good to see that they're coming back. So they're, they love the facility as well. And then basically, just in a nutshell, we are open for all 10,000 viewers we have live right now. Check out our website, check out our social media, or just give us a call. It's kind of a shameless plug, but we're open for business and any type of business. We'll take it left, right, up, down, weddings, you name it, we're ready for you and we're excited. So that's just quickly about the Big Wood and then I want to move on to liquor stores. So we can always reconvene and have more questions down the road. So liquor stores, number one, I always, I always talk to safety. First and foremost, safety is the most important thing to liquor store operations. As a responsible municipal operation, we encourage moderation of all sorts. Previous resolution number 207 dash from 2018, just the first couple of lines, I'd just like to reiterate. Whereas the sale of strong beer, spirits, wine has long been regulated to present or preserve public health and minimize public safety concerns. And whereas for all the public safety and public health, cities have interest in preventing youth from obtaining alcohol. Those are still today, the common, a common, excuse me. It's still first and foremost on our minds. We are, we're very invested into preventing youth from obtaining alcohol. We are constantly into checking IDs. I was going to ask who funds our gram shop in town. We have multiple gram shop training for, for checking IDs and checking for abbreviation. I think those are great, well-funded opportunities for my staff to get in and really brush up their skills on, on, you know, serving and not serving on intoxication, intoxication levels. Sales, I'm not going to go deep dive real far into sales numbers. We are fortunate to have a really solid finance department for the city of Fergus Falls. They prepare state reports, local reports, council reports, you name it. Everything's public knowledge all the way up to the state level. You can go online and see everything you need to see. So they set the bar very high and I like that. I like working for that type of self or employee or other staff. And it always sets up time for me to do other events in the community, such as tastings and additional, additional above and beyond the liquor store management. And I just wanted to read this real quick. This just came from United Way Women United. This is a thank you note from Cheryl. Not going to read the whole thing, but really quick, thank you for your involvement in the Chef's Table event last month. Tyler is his name. He's one of our sales reps. I believe he's a Fergus Falls native. Go Otters. Did a nice, he did a nice job in explaining each pairing. He added a successful event. He raised over $10,000 to the Imagination Library. So awesome, awesome, awesome. Costs zero dollars on our end, but it's great. There's, there's a lot of these that you guys don't see that come across my door. I had to present, done every single one. I probably could multiple times a year, but these are great, great to have because it costs zero dollars. Tyler put in his own time, his own product and really just, just one more, one more event to, that we can, that we can add. So back to the numbers, real briefly, sales were up 2.42% from 2022 to 2023. Gross margins up 1% over the same period and then operating expenses were down $27,000 from prior year. Those are some big, so there's some big highlights that, you know, there's, there's lots and lots of pages to go through. And like I said, we have a solid finance staff that would love to get more, more reports and to you guys if you need them. But that's, that's kind of the higher end level. And then I always like to say this, it's kind of hard to turn into a sales, or a, I guess, a banner, a Budweiser banner for the front of the store. But in 2023, the taxis levy would have been about 9% higher had the transfers from the liquor stores to the general fund not been made. It's like I said, it's not a real, not a real Budweiser sign for the front of the store, but I think it's a pretty big, a pretty big chunk. So had another solid year. Looking forward to 26 more. Every year I'd add, I'd increase one number as I do 26 more years until you're in 65. So I hope, I hope to stay here till, till the end and, and I hope we keep going and, and continue to add to the community development projects. So another one I always, this is probably the fifth time I've spoke on it in my, my career. Our, our point of sale system is very dated. It has been dated seven years ago, eight years ago. So every time I present, I remind the council that we have old trusty rusty, 350,000 mile vehicle that is still going strong. And then for me, it's kind of have the mentality of it's not broke, don't fix it. Seven, eight years ago, they, the POS system said that they're not going to do any more updates, any patches, any fixes. So a lot of our surrounding municipal liquor stores switched then and there and made the big, big costly switch. And we said, no, we're going to hold it off and then wait on it. And it was a, it was a correct move. So I'm really glad, glad we did. There's a few sleepless nights because you don't know when it's going to go or not. It may go slowly. It might, it might just in one day just, just be out. But we have a fairly, a fairly decent plan in place for, for when it does. And just letting you know that hopefully it's not this year, but I might present next year on it. And at one, at some point, we will need a new POS system for both stores. And they don't really go down piece by piece. They kind of go down as a whole. And when you have two, two stores and multiple offices and computers and it can be, you know, a costly item. But I think seven, eight years ago, there were, but the number was 100,000 or something like that. So every year we're just keep pushing it on and I'd like to push it on another year and hopefully we can get another 10 years out of our system, but we'll see.
And then I'll chime in on that a little bit, just to let you know as a council, the money is there. And when Sandy does the projections for the liquor store, we are reserving that amount. So when Brandon is ready to replace that, we're ready to do it. So.
Yeah. And speed is, the speed of transactions has stayed there. There's a few more features with the newer system that, that I'd probably use, but I just, like I said, it's not broke, don't fix it. And we'll just keep running with it. Keep cruising along here. Skip that, skip that. I don't know how much time I want to go with this. I really want to just keep it light. I don't want to really dive in too far, I guess, but the downtown facade. The downtown liquor store, if you've been by it, it is not brand new. It is a, an elder building, I will say. I think 1940s. It was a.
It was an implement.
Implement. Thank you. Thank you. I was just looking up the history of some of the buildings before me.
And a grocery store.
Grocery store. Thank you.
Yeah, you were just a youngster back then, weren't you, Al?
For the life of me, I don't know how the amount of traffic that you guys have done before my time in, in that, in that parking lot with 11, 12 parking spots is, is beyond me. Because I, I run out of parking at the west store with all the trailers and large vehicles. So, you know, I guess I'd have been messing up and down the block in busy times. But so anyway, downtown liquor store. It is serving its purpose. It is, it has ice cold beer, the same temperature as the west store. It is the same pricing as the west store. So in terms of just product, you're getting exact same product at either location. So as a customer from city, as a customer of Fergus Falls, you're getting the exact same product. Now, the, the curb appeal of the two stores are what differs. And I just wanted the council to know that it's sort of been my initiative to not spend money on the store until we spend money on the store. So it's obviously not, I'm going to swing over. You know, we were sitting on that two toll road here, basically north towards Wells Park, over here, the cracks and the stucco. There's plenty that, that could be sort of fixed, but talking with Lynn and some of the staff, I don't know how much, how much repairing we want to do before we actually make some sort of, you know, actual repair. So I did, what I did is just a light level and you guys might kind of chuckle at it. I don't, I don't have any kind of follow up or any kind of next, next, next step, I guess, other than to show you guys what, what I would do as a liquor store manager if they were Brandon, Brandon Curry's liquor stores. And I wasn't, you know, in tune with, with current budget, the, the next budget, the following budget. This is just what Brandon would do as a liquor store manager. So Lynn, if you would, option number one, just repair and paint, just a paint and paint job. I'm not sure on the stucco if we can repair it like they said or not. Lynn would help me out with that one or the stat city staff. But just straight same color, same everything. I know everybody loves the big red peg access. We like to shoot them just beaming light over there. But that's just, just slate and, but even that, that, the coat of paint would be, you know, 50 probably at least. You know, if we fix, fix the stucco and do some extras. So it isn't a lot better. I don't know. I think, like I said, it's the beer is the same for the same coldness and the prices are the same. So are we going to get more customers by putting a coat of paint on it? You know, that's, I don't know. Option two, let's go bigger. Whoa. This is just a, notice the brick and black panels along with some smacks and stone. If you notice the, what we're kind of mirroring out there, the Fergus Falls Police Department looks pretty slick. So this is all facade. This is not a full new building. This is not a full new anything. This is only facade exterior that we'd be looking at. So just have a couple more options that you can look at. And again, just high level, just signage and for peg access, just signage, whether peg stays or goes. That has been talked about. You can turn it into a tenant or a rental option at the end there because it is a decent sized space and we have a lot of traffic at the liquor stores. So there's an option there without hanging on too long. Next, option three.
Hey, Brandon.
Yeah, sorry.
What's price on this one?
Uh, so can I hit the price on the end?
Okay, I used to say price on the last one.
I have multiple and, and so I'll come back to you. So. All right, option three. So the last, West Liquor Store. I think before we get to all the options, that's probably going to be my favorite. I'm a little biased. But arches, just like instead of the flat ones, it kind of mirrors the other store, shows that we have two liquor stores in town that are, that are municipal. Get a common question that I'm going to the private store downtown or I'm going to the municipal at the west store. It's, we're both municipal, so it's a beautiful facility. Inside, it's fine, but there's another option for the outside. We have a couple more. Let's keep going. Lynn? Number four, look at that big old beauty. We don't even need a new roof fully. That would be, that would be overdoing our current roof. So that, that is, that is the pavilion model. And that's just really another concept. This is what we're looking at as concepts to see. Again, our roof is okay. I think when Lynn last looked at it, I think he said 15, 10, 15 years we have still on it. Start to put another roof on top of an existing roof, that sign is kind of overkill. So number five, no roof, but still with that pavilion look. I'm a big fan of pavilion look, but I don't know what the, what the future of the, I don't know, curb appeal of the city is. So whether, whether pavilion, whether the lasting brick look, whether just a coat of paint is, is up to, is up to everybody and really up to the citizens, you know, are you going to come shop more? Are you going to come in more? Would you like just more lighting, you know? But like I said, I am here 26 more years, so I, whether the building caves in or, or needs that, I hope sometime in the next 26 years, we can look at, we could look and look at that. And then lastly, option six, just the up north look, very similar to Holiday. I think everybody's kind of seen that kind of look around. You can, you can obviously add or remove rock and different, different things you want to do. And then same with all of them, peg access as well. And then I don't notice that there's no additional windows on any of them. This is from the, looking at from the west now. Windows are not great for product. They just, they just, sunlight ruins, ruins product any time longer than a few months. So I don't want a whole beaming light of windows. So restaurants and retail stores downtown are great for windows and, and high vis. But I don't want the wind, the, the sunlight beaming in and ruining product on, on mine. Or nor do I want rocks breaking the windows on that side of the building. So we have updated that door to a C three door. So that brings in plenty of light there and that's more than enough coming into the intersection for me. So Lynn, if you want to just flare through the next, these are all the back options, the options from the, the other side of it. So coming down, you know, kind of just get a view. And again, it's really high level. I'm not even presenting anything. I, I do have some numbers just real quick and, you know, just looking from that side. So then we actually, it was about a year ago that, that we finished with, just with the, the schematic of this. And in just the high level numbers, since we didn't talk installation, we didn't talk the very specifics, but just a very rough number a year ago was around 250 or 300,000 dollars for this, this project. Now, I, I don't know if that's still in the same, I would imagine it up, I'm going to guess going up, but.
For which project, Brandon?
Uh, one through three, excuse me, one through three. Since we are not really touching the roof, it's really limited roof, anything. There's a few spots that maybe need some, some loving, but and it's some additional lighting. So one through three, I think, I guess, I don't want to say 250, 300, but that was a number about a year ago, 250 to 300,000. Prox is one through three. Four was the pavilion one with the, with the, the over framing of the roof. So I don't even have a number for that, what the whole new roof would, would be. That, that's a little excessive. And then the reduced version of the, of the. And then the reduced version of the, of the pavilion look would be probably on that higher end portion of that because it's a mixture, but I don't know what the gables, I don't, I'd have to see what we're at with the gables. So 1507, Sandy, I did it in 15. Okay, so really, I'm just trying to get to the end here. Any questions that I, any questions, I guess?
Thanks, Brandon. Just thanks for the management you provide to liquor stores. I mean, I just really appreciate the, you're leading with safety, obviously, but then I also appreciate, you know, this is a taxpayer funded operation and, you know, sales are up and expenses are down, and that's like, you know, it's good to see from a city enterprise. So thanks, thanks for, thanks for the mindset you bring to that operation. And again, leading with safety first is important, but that business mindset is appreciated. Questions for Brandon? Bill had a comment.
I just want to commend Brandon for his wonderful leadership of the operations. You're going to hear from our auditors at the next council meeting, at a work session, and they'll have some charts and graphs on the liquor store as well. And you'll see each year, Brandon continues to improve the operations of an already good operating. So each year, we've seen growth and just what you said, increased revenues, and even trimming some expenses. So, and I want to thank Brandon for bringing those various concepts. It's something we've kind of looked at as staff for the future, so we wanted to see what you as a council, just plant the seed a little bit for what the future could look like. So thank you, Brandon, for great leadership over there.
Thanks, Brandon, and Bill and Sandy too, because, you know, just to reiterate the fact that, you know, those are services provided, you know, the 9% you mentioned and, you know, those are funds that are going back into the community that are improving, community and supporting projects, so really important.
Yeah, I completely spaced it out, but the one, the one fact, the 400,000 for the Doc Hunter for a project, and 200,000 for Dr. Acton Ellen Mason Park Liquor Store as well, I fully spaced those out, but luck can you do with the community development of all sorts, so.
Thank you, Brandon.
Any other questions or comments on the facade, or just leave it at the end?
Bill, what do we, do you have an accrued amount in R and M at the liquor store?
Accumulated depreciation, not off the top of my head.
And maybe you just circulate it, you don't have to bring it to a meeting, but...
Yep, Sandy, we'll pull that, and...
Right, so we have the money set aside for the point of sale, and also we have a few years' old set aside money for the facade.
So we, we've been pulling 100,000 for the point of sale, right, is what we've kind of been earmarking?
Yeah, it's 150 now.
150 now, and how much for the facade? Did we do 300, 350?
Yeah.
350 is what we...
Okay, thanks.
And we, we do those projections, we build in the depreciation, obviously we're covering it because we're profitable, but then we, we look at the cash flow for these future costs as well too. So I guess that probably answers your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then information, I guess really just what do you want as a shopper, as a customer, as a citizen of Fergus Falls, are you happy with what we have currently? And if you are, and you're going to keep shopping, then we're fine with what we have. But if you'd like to see some more lighting and some matching and some upkeep, then let your council members know, and we'll certainly work on that in the future years.
Thanks, Brandon.
Ben?
Yeah, Scott.
I did have one question for him. You got away from me a little too quick. As you were looking at the different possibilities for the downtown store, you just mentioned the peg access space over there. Would there be any advantage to the liquor store expanding into that space, or is it strictly going to be considered a tenant space?
I would recommend strictly tenant space because a couple of things we've talked about is parking is the main thing, and if we chopped it off, I don't think we could gain more than three to five spots, and even so, they'd be kind of angled in and be just dividing and conquering there. And then breaking down the wall, it's backroom space, I don't need any more floor space at the downtown store. So I'd be basically just adding more backroom, and I don't need to have more backroom for purchasing power. So padding, padding the backroom is all I would really be doing. So I, I don't think it would help the liquor stores to add, add on to their footprint on that point, so that's, that's my, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Brandon. Thanks, Scott. All right, so we have two new items, new business items from Chief Bergeren. First is Declaration of Surplus Property. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, thank you, Your Honor. Sorry for the late submissions here. The first item is Declaration of Surplus Property. It's Unit 23 of 2024, police interceptor. There's actually two points to this. We're also looking at adding a K-9 program next year. The problem is, in order for me to get a vehicle and get it set up, it almost takes a year. So I gotta kind of get ahead of, ahead of this a little bit. So the proceeds of this vehicle sale, and I think I have two other squads that are ready to go to auction, I'm hoping will offset the cost of the squad that isn't budgeted. And if it doesn't quite meet the full amount, we have plenty of money in our forfeiture accounts to cover that cost. So just looking for authorization to declare that unit as surplus and replace it with a new vehicle.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Chief, thank you. Jim, thanks, Scott, this motion to bring this Declaration of Surplus Property to the council on Monday night, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same, sign that motion carries.
All right, the next item is a grant opportunity for radios, and I'll apologize especially to Anthony because I know you're going to say that my math doesn't work, but I just didn't add all the information in there. This past legislative session, they authorized several million dollars for the replacement of portable radios. There is a cap on it of $40,000, so the maximum amount we can receive is $40,000. Last year, you approved us to replace, I think, 16 of our 24 portable radios. This amount is the remaining eight radios at $43,855. We did a 10, we're required to do at least a 5% match, we did a 10% match. So the city's cost would be $4,385.70 if we are awarded the grant. So just looking for a resolution, you know, authorizing us to submit for the grant and supporting that, that match of 4,385.70.
Thanks, Chief, we can do that by resolution?
I'll make it, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Second, Scott, thank you. Any questions for Chief Bergeren? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same, sign, motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Lynn's got a couple announcements.
Just one again, we're down there, forgot to put on there, on June 3rd, we have a council work session at 4:30 when the audit will be presented, so please put that up.
June 3rd, 4:30, audit presentation. And then just want to remind people, Thursday, tomorrow, May 30th, from 4 to 6, it's the grand opening of the Splash Pad. Gene, City, a lot of people have gone to a lot of lengths to make that a really special event, and we're really excited about it. So we want to welcome the public downtown, 4 to 6, there's going to be activities for the kids. Hope, hope, hope all the council can make it down there. It's going to be a very special night.
Mayor, we do have a rain date if the weather is not going to hold tomorrow, and that is June 4th, Tuesday next week, so.
Tuesday, June 4th, same time, 4 to 6 for rain date, but we're going to hold the rain off and get it in tomorrow night, hopefully.